Okay. You called the meeting to order. First order of business, approve the minutes of March 12, 2015.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from March 12, 2015. I'll do it.
Second half? For the discussion.
No.
Second order of business, public hearing for fiscal year 2015 Community Development Block Grant Program. I will turn it over to Michael Payton for the Community Development Group and Harvey Ellis State. And Harvey Ellis State from Real Estate Diagnostics.
So part of the process for the Small Cities Grant Application is a public hearing where we can go through some of the finer points of the program and just update you briefly on some existing grant work that we have going on. Just to give you a quick overview, in the past, the town has done, has a rehab program for many years. We've done some road projects recently. And this year, the town is looking to help fund an affordable housing development behind the Big Y that I'm sure most of you have heard of. And Harvey definitely can give the full rundown of what that project is, but I just want to quickly go through the handout that we have here. If anybody could get the handout, it's up here. Anybody else see this? So the program is the Connecticut Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program, CDBG. It's federally funded. The money is then sent to the state where they award it on a competitive basis to town to undertake some of these projects that we just talked about. One of the key aspects of the program is that it has to meet the national objective. So you're looking at things like benefit low to mod income residents, emergencies, natural disasters, and prevention of slumming and blight. In terms of the low to mod income designation, in the back, I have a handy little chart that refers to a household gross income. So typically, anybody that would qualify for the work that goes into the CDBG program, you'd have to say that 50% of the money that you're using would benefit somebody that would fall under at least the moderate income limit on this charge.
Ninety-eight percent in this case.
Yeah. So, this year, what the proposal is, is to do up to $800,000 in Small Cities program funds to support the development of, what's the current name of the area?
It'll be Woodland Springs, but it's the Avery Park National.
It needs Avery Park Revitalization Initiative is the official name.
And so, the town has already been awarded a steep grant of $500,000 to support this project. And Harvey, in a second, will go into more details on what the actual project is. I just want to quickly go through the rest of this. The town is working through FY12 and FY14 grants, each for $300,000 that funded the housing rehab program. So there is an active waiting list in town. If anybody is interested in the program, definitely contact the Small Cities office on the third floor or get in touch with Beth and she can give you the info on the program. It does, it does about, up to about $30,000 worth of work on a house, if the house needs it, for low to moderate income households.
For homeowners?
Homeowners, yep. I believe the program in town here can also do multi-units and investor owners will leave from that one. Sometimes don't allow investor owners.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Not sure.
You have to be organized.
Okay. And it's secured by a lien on the property, but basically what you're looking at is a program that is designed to keep residents in their house. The lien is really to just prevent speculation. The town doesn't let you fix up the house and lien. They want to loan you the money to stay in the neighborhood. So that's the program that's running right now. It's been active since, I'd say the early 90s. And the waiting list is, it gets long at times, but it definitely cycles through, so if anybody's ever interested in the program, just get on the list and before you know it, your name will come up. So, another big aspect of the application is the state really wants to promote fair housing. So the town has put together a three-year updated action plan last year, so that'll be good until 2017. There's a copy of that in Ms. Loughlin's office. Access the programs, like I said, everything's up on the, on the third floor. We're up on Mondays. And you can also leave a message or just get in touch with Beth if there's any questions about various programs that may be needed. And the last note that I wanted to talk about is the program income plan. This is in reference to the loans that we do for the housing rehab program. They're secured by a lien, like I said, so if you go to sell your house, that money's got to come back to the town and it gets put into what's considered a program income account. If the town receives up to $35,000 in program income a year, it's, it goes into an undesigned program income account. That money can typically be used for grant-related activities, something that, that would normally qualify as a grant activity, although that's not required. If you get more than $35,000 paid back in a year, that money does get put into the program income account and is subject to this plan. And the plan calls for that money to go right back into the housing rehab program. First, for emergency cases, so if you have an actively leaking roof, a failed septic system, failed well, handicapped modifications so you can live in the house. And then the second priority is the general pool of funding for the housing rehab program. So the money just keeps getting cycled around. It doesn't get swallowed up by anybody, except for, you know, the, if it's less than $35,000, it could go to some other associated activity, not necessarily housing rehab though. So with that, if anybody has any questions about the grant program, I'm happy to answer them, although I have to assume that most people would like to hear from Harvey about the actual application for this year.
Let me, we'll have Harvey speak to the project and his good news that you received today. You know, but this has been, this has been a project with the Housing Authority for three years, and it's been a focus. People have worked very hard. And the redevelopment committee, Harvey, Dennis Malan, that's our town engineer, you know, we've, you know, we've been to meetings in Hartford, we've met with all the officials from HUD and CDC, and I just want to let the Board of Selectmen know how we got here with determining what to do with the Small Cities money this year. One of the common themes in all of these meetings was, although the Housing Authority operates in autonomy from the town with their own funds, the common question asked back to me was, well, what is the town going to put into this? What is the, you know, I can't go to the taxpayers and say, you know, we're going to raise your taxes another mil or mil and a half to contribute to one housing project. So the only way we could do it is to redesignate the potential of other ones that would be getting in, the steep grant. You know, the steep grant, we got a half a million dollars, which actually, we, when we applied, and, and what we've done is working with the state, you know, we've, we've worked with the state on the utility expansion project and applied for the steep grant to get them their utilities, tie it in with our project for the utilities. But then the Small Cities, you know, we can't go to the taxpayers to say, you know, we need money to fund the council authority, so, you know, I need the decision that we take the Small Cities this year and we allocate it towards the Housing Authority. Now, this is the application. It's no guarantee that we're going to get it, but in the last couple of weeks, we've had a very good track record and things are doing very good. So I'll let Harvey explain the good news today and where we're at.
I'll go backwards with the good news.
Okay.
A little bit and talk about the steep grant. Reddy assisted the town and put that application together, a little company. And, and it, part of the reason why we focused in on building, doing infrastructure with that half a million dollars is to get the kickoff, if you will, the infrastructure that we, that the town plans to do, which I think has a lot of support around the state and a lot of federal support and is the best thing that can happen to create an economy in the town. And, and aside from that, that we're half a mile away from water for our project, we needed to bring the water to the Big Y. And we, we have just about enough money in that grant to do it, put in whatever, whatever other utilities. Dennis and I were talking today about the possibility of cable ready, just in case that should happen in the town. And so I'm pretty proud of that and, and the Housing Authority and, and our participation in the town's goal to do that. So the one way, the other, that's going to have an impact on that goal and it's going to help at the same time the housing project. We were awarded a contingent, a grant, I should say, from the State of Connecticut Department of Housing of $6,500,000, contingent upon receiving the tax credits. This is, so that pot of money today, when we receive the tax credits for the 79 units that we will be building on the property with the Big Y, that will be joined, that 6.5 million will be joined by approximately 15 million in tax credit revenues. We have shopped for a while with different syndicators and we've got a good offer now, $0.96 on the dollar, and that's going to bring in about $13,000. In other words, we have assembled just about every penny that we need to build this. The United Bank has agreed to provide us with construction, lending, and permanent mortgage. This project will only require an $858,000 mortgage. That mortgage will be subsidized by a grant that we wrote to the Federal Home Loan Bank of Boston. We were awarded a contingent position, which will probably be moved to direct grant, but right now, we have a grant available to subsidize the construction loan. So the construction loan will be around 4% or less. And then if you know about commercial lending, that's not the numbers that we're dealing with now. It's, it's only 2% coming from the Federal Home Loan Bank and then the cost of servicing that loan. So that, that's been a very successful process. This, these funds that we're talking about this evening, I'm going to turn to you. One of the things that I'm really happy about reaching this point in our process is that we've spent a lot of time with residents. We've talked a lot to people from the community. We've interacted with people living around the housing. We've listened to what they've said to us and we've tried to accommodate, and, and I feel we have, and about the residents, and what do you want to say about their participation?
Just to introduce myself, I'm Emery Prohne. I'm the executive director up at the Housing Authority where we have currently 110 seniors and disabled residents living in affordable housing. Unfortunately, they're living in expired.
Obsolete.
Obsolete housing that we really need to get them moved out of. Heads comes in Woodland Springs, which is what the residents and board members named it. The property we're going to do behind the Big Y in phases, we're going to start with the 79 units, which we just received the, for today. And as Harvey has said multiple times through this three-year process, you know, it's a labor of love for us. These residents really have given their heart and soul their whole life and are just looking for safe, affordable housing, and we want to make sure we can give that to them. And again, they've come to, all, for the last three and a half years, our revitalization meetings, they are there, they came with us to the board meeting today. They are committed to this, just, and again, I can't say enough about our selectmen in this town, how committed they are as well to this project that we all have. Just to speak to what Rich said, if you look at almost every other town in Connecticut, the CBDG grants almost always go to the housing authorities because, in essence, that was originally one of the plans for the money. Obviously, it does have other uses, but most of your towns will, in some way, shape, or form, use that money to help the housing authorities. Housing authorities don't have budgets, you know, where they can afford to do roofs, where they can afford to do repairs, where they can afford to keep the property running on a regular basis. We're working off of 30% of social security income to try and run a property of, you know, again, 110 units built in the 60s. So we needed to, you know, look to the town and say, yes, no, we don't want taxpayer dollars involved, but how about if we look to some of the grants that are available to the towns? And, you know, I think we spoke to Rich originally and he had said, well, let's look at the CDBG. And I think that's where we got to this point.
Well, without, without the selectmen and the boards' support, none of that, none of what we just talked about accomplishing could have been accomplished. So it's a partnership. About those residents that can't afford to pay enough, in some cases, to take care of the lighting in their parking area, let alone cover the costs of, of all of the other expenses associated with running it.
Snow removal.
Yeah, snow removal.
Even go there.
Well, what we were able to do also, and it won't be seen in the budget, but it will be seen in the operating budget, the State of Connecticut awarded us 36 units to go with the project, not with the residents, of rental assistance. They call it Rental Assistance Program. There's a program, a federal program called Section 8, RAP, some people call it. The State of Connecticut has pledged to pay the difference between the 30% and the, the actual rent for that unit. And so that's an extraordinary boost.
Thirty-six of them?
And to make that.
For the next 15 years renewal.
And to make that just simplified, our average rent is about $320 to $25 a month, and the average rent is about $800. So we would go from receiving $300 to run an apartment monthly, to be able to get the 300 from the resident or 350, and then the balance coming from RAP. So now we're going to be able to run that apartment, obviously, more efficiently.
This is the State of Connecticut's way of, of trying to save those elderly housing projects that can't be revitalized because there's cert, there's just not enough money to subsidize the rents. And you can't build a new project and, and have people who are of, of the kind of incomes that we're talking about, in the back, the very low incomes.
Harbor level.
Yeah. It can't be done without that kind of assistance, and the State of Connecticut's been very cooperative. It's taken us a couple of years to ingratiate ourselves to that. But that, that, and the last thing I want to say is that this project will provide 16 units for homeless veterans, okay?
Not just the home, it's also going to provide the services they need, whether it's getting them.
24-hour.
Right. Whether it's getting them medical support, whether it's getting them support to help them find, I, I mean, unfortunately, we're hearing about veterans living in the campgrounds without water and heat during the winter. We're hearing that they're living in substandard housing, and we, that's not what we do. We house people in a formidable safe housing. And when we heard we were able to set aside units for the Stafford, well, I don't think it's just Stafford, vets, but homeless vets in, in general, so that, that meant a lot to us.
And that will come along with a subsidy, they call it Shelter Plus, so that their rent will be paid through the federal government, through the, actually, I don't want to even name the, what's the agency that's falling apart, it seems, anyway?
That's good. I mean, we've got a very active veterans advisory.
Right, and I want to.
And they've been actually very helpful.
As a Vietnam combat vet, I, I have had a little experience with that, and it's behind me now, and I'm blessed to be in a position to pass that on and help those veterans. I'm, and tomorrow, I'll be wearing jeans and seeing where our veterans are. So, getting around, running. Yeah. So, I mean, we could go on, but that's, that's a clear and complete picture of what's been going on for the last three years and where we are right now. And I'd like to congratulate all of us, the neighbors, the board, the Housing Authority, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
So in terms of the.
Oh, what's the project? What we, we have been talking about is that because this project is, we, we have sufficient funds to do this. We have sufficient funds. Stand over here so people can see. The entrance, this is the Big Y parking area. You don't see 190 in this picture, but it's somewhere around here. The road's going to be coming in to this point where it belong, will belong to the Housing Authority, but not really the Housing Authority that can, the limited partnership that we're forming to raise the funds through the tax credits. Not even going to start talking about that. But this, this road will co-buy a two clusters and then, these are all two-family units, so everybody has an end unit. And these are two larger buildings, a 25 units and a 24, 26 unit building that are two and a half stories because, because of the sloping of the site. And what we need for now, and going in the future, because this is half of the project, this is 79 units, and we're going to be building an additional 79 units, so it'll be a total of 148 on this site. The, the rest of this site is going to be developed by Big Y. Matthew, Matthew Dimmore and I have been talking quite a bit, and he's going to be talking about putting commercial in. But what we're lacking is, we have one means of egress, and we do need a, an emergency road, not a, a full road, but one that will allow the equipment that, that is available to the fire department and the EMTs to get in should anything happen to the main entrance. And that would be coming from Orkut.
Orkutville.
Orkutville. And join up. And then this road's going to continue off with the second phase. So that, we've had it priced, and it just turns out to be $750,000, which leaves $50,000 for soft costs.
And just so you know, it is not a normal road. It's for emergency egress only. It is not for my residents to come in and come out. This is just if something happens in this area, the emergency vehicles would still be able to get in. And the fire chief was very concerned that we did just have the one means of egress.
So I'm, I'm really hopeful that when we, we will be meeting, the Housing Authority and, and my team will be, and with all the team, we'll be meeting with DOH and talking to them about their department, Small Cities Department, and this project, and how neatly it fits into the original Community Development Block Grant, that's CDBG legislation. Having been involved in that legislation since year one, I've become very familiar with it. What is it now, 32 or 33?
Hold it, it is.
Huh?
I'm not sure.
Anyway, a while. Anyway, that's, that's what we're hoping to be able to raise the funds for, and that will allow, if anything should occur, an emergency egress. Dennis called it a dirt road. I like to think of it more of a, as a gravel, dirt road, a solid road. We may have to do, there is a wet line crossing, we may have to do a bridge of some kind, but that's been counted into the calculations. Any questions about this?
Is this over here, is this more units over here?
Yeah. Two, four, six, eight, 10, 12, 14, 16 units. Off the road. The original plan was to put them on the road, but we've had some other experiences with other projects where it's just not the right thing. I don't want traffic or parking, this is the road. And every one of these, these roads and side, there'll be a lot of sidebooks you don't see in this schematic. All of them will be less than a five pitch. Every unit will be handicapped accessible, fully handicapped and converted to handicap, so that in every unit, everybody, regardless of their ability and age, will be able to access.
We call it age and place. What we run into up at Avery Park right now is we have, again, 110 units, and we have people who have been there five years, seven years, who came in maybe with a walker, maybe walking fine. Now, all of a sudden, they're talking about wheelchairs, they're talking about needing some special apparatus in the bathroom, and we can't accommodate that. We, we're about 325 to 345 square feet on average. We just can't accommodate it. And that's who we are trying to house, is people who need disability, I mean, need ADA compliance for their disability, or again, that age and place capability. And these apartments are all capable of doing that.
They're all, that's better than 700, 750 square feet, some of them 800 square feet.
Full turn radius for wheelchairs.
And the hard costs, despite what it might have been read in a.
Anyway.
Anyway, the hard costs are less than $140,000 per unit. That's the real deal. Any questions?
What's going to happen to Avery Park?
Well, we've been looking at Avery Park, and that's going to be a long-term discussion. It's not a bad spot for families, what we call workforce housing. It, it could have a lot of uses, but that's going to be a long discussion.
It's probably about five to six years out because we want to do the 79 units, then another 79 units before we ever get back to Avery Park.
Congratulations, that sounds great. When you present to us, I think almost every year, you have $500,000 that we take and we give a $30,000 for hosts. That, we're getting that again? No. This, the way that, the way that DOH runs the program is they're only allowed to apply for one activity.
That's what I was remembering.
So, yeah. So what we've done in years past, when they, they used to enjoy funding road projects in recent years, this one aside, because this is a, a project in support of housing, when we would do the High Street.
Yeah, High Street, Prospect.
Yeah. We would, we would just alternate, we'd do housing rehab one year. Those funds would pretty much stretch out for two years and then, so that every other year, we'd do a road project. So with Housing Rehab being funded in twelve and fourteen, this fits in nicely. It's essentially going back to the old, the old system that the town had been doing of alternating. So the Housing Rehab money will still be, will still be going and then we can get back to that for next year's application.
That's what I was asking. It was one or the other, we had to choose a while ago, and now this is, you get more money, it's great, okay.
It fits in schedule, just coincidentally.
Yeah. And one of the big things, you know, it's great that this project is now so far along because it would have been a very steep hill to climb to try to get this funding before all of that was settled. They definitely want to be able to put this, the CDBG money into a project that's ready to hit the ground running. We, you know, we do have a timely expenditure issue where they want their money gone within sixteen to eighteen months. So if we were to say, two years ago, we wanted this money and it's still sitting there, you know, we'd put the town at risk for future funding. So it really works out well this year.
I know you're saying it's a good project, but I applaud your persistence because I know a year and a half or so it looked kind of sad and came back around when you guys were ready, so.
Well, yeah, it's been more than three years.
Yes.
And that doesn't, I mean, that was a setback for me. A new administration had to get used to the style that we have, which is to do it and not, anyway. Honest truth is not usually, not always the most politically correct.
This application will go in, it's due on the tenth, and we should hear within a few months, hopefully, two, three months usually.
Do I understand, sorry, that this is going to all be done at no expense to local taxpayers? The town taxes?
A little better than that, that with the contribution from the project.
Including maintenance of facility, future maintenance of facility?
Oh, yeah.
So we pay nothing for it? Okay. So if I, that's what I thought or heard, I just wanted to be sure that's what I heard.
When's the last time you had one of those deals?
I'll take two.
You know, the town of Stafford, Dennis and I was just talking about this today, you know, the town of Stafford for so long, we haven't been really receiving our share of funds, whether they were urban funds or rural funds. And, you know, we've all worked really hard with Harvey at the Housing Authority and then with, you know, Dennis and 3M, TTM, Johnson Memorial with this utility project. We're starting to get some of that money.
Getting momentum now.
Building momentum, but that money's coming in just after then. So it's working really good.
Better late than never.
You guys have any kind of update on the utility project? Which you didn't talk about.
Yeah, we can actually get into that in a minute.
Okay, great.
After we process, I can ask Dennis to give a short update on that.
It's good.
It's good.
When will the project start? When is it earmarked to start?
With the best of luck and no unforeseen occurrences, my hope is that within sixty to ninety days, we will break ground. When we do a project without the accoutrement, it's a place. Everyone's qualified. We're looking at the whole thing, we're deciding what else. We're looking to, we're conscious for the electrical. We've worked together on the project first too, so it's a natural.
Any more questions?
I'd like to ensure to everybody knows.
Any more questions?
Took care of that one, please.
Okay. Close the public hearing. Need a motion to approve the filing of those six.
I will make a motion to approve a filing of a fiscal year 2015 Small Cities Grant CDBG Program Grant Application in the amount not to exceed eight hundred thousand and to authorize the direct and direct the first electing to execute and file such application in all documents, plans, certifications, resolutions related to therefore number two, to adopt the resolution required by the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development relating to said application. Three, to improve the program income reuse plan. Four, to designate Richard Shook as the Fair Housing Officer. Five, to designate Richard Shook as the ADA Coordinator. And to designate Richard Shook as the Affirmative Action Compliance Officer.
Second half. Any discussion?
DOH instead of DECD.
DOH.
There now is a Department of Housing of Connecticut.
Instead of-
Instead of Department of Economic and Community Development.
Instead of CDBG.
No, no, no. Instead of DECD. Number two.
They changed their name last year.
D.
It's history. It used to be.
Department of Economic and Community Development.
So that's now DOH.
Department of Housing, HOH.
So Captain Smith has a room department.
Because they split the two. Got it.
They took it out, separated.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? All right.
Thank you again. Thank you. I'm glad I brought my glasses, this is kind of funny, read something.
They're up there.
I can never see.
And you're like, look, I'm on my own, I'm like, out of the back, some of those days. All right, I'm going to make a motion to add Mark Rich as the planning and zoning as an alternate for a one-year term to expire three, one, twenty-six. I'd like to nominate or make motion for Ron Pachota for economic development. Economic Development Commission to expire seven, one, nineteen. And Peter Kowalewski to fill the vacancy of Michael Interview, term to expire seven, one, eighteen. And Bruce Davis for the True Word, one-year term. Burton, oh, we have to say. Oh.
You said Bruce?
I said, okay. Burton Davis, one-year term, expire four, one, twenty-six, sixteen.
Any discussion?
No.
And I get hurt in first conference all the time.
I didn't know what I said, so it's a long day.
Mr. Davis.
That's right. Mr. Davis. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next order of business is transfer. Okay, this is from the building office requesting a transfer from public hearings of a hundred dollars to vehicle, gasoline, oil. And conference and meetings of two hundred dollars for the fee. Current payment, I'm sure the conference and meetings are valid. So both of them. What is she looking for, for a transfer in conference and meetings?
No, she's looking to transfer to it.
Both are from here.
Both are from here to two hundred. Hundred from public hearings of vehicle, gasoline, oil to conference and meetings. It's a different format than the credit.
I'll make a motion to transfer the money from public hearing, vehicle and gas to conference and meetings of two hundred dollars.
Second half. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Next order of business, RFP solar deal for a project.
We don't have these.
We didn't get them.
No, we didn't get them.
I don't know if Dennis knows this guy.
Is it in the phone now?
The truck, the truck is in your phone right now.
Okay. Okay, we got the, next one is RFP for the geothermal solar project. We got the request for approvals in, we received two, Bank of America and KeyBank. Bank of America was, came in at two point three, three, five percent. KeyBank came in at two point eight, seven percent or two point nine, one percent.
Thank you.
The effective net rate on the Bank of America, because they have the one percent buy down through PURA, the effective net rate on the solar, the discount on the interest for the solar portion of the project works that the interest rate is actually two point zero four percent. So we obviously, Bank of America is the winner of that bid. We were able to negotiate our prepayment penalties after ten years. You know, so what I need is, I need a, I need a motion to proceed moving forward, subject to draft of the final documents for Bank of America. Bruce Chudwick, from Shipman and Goodwin, will get to work right on that so that we can move this forward. Because the final documents, when we went to the town meeting for approval, final documents have to be approved by the Board of Selecting and by the Board of Finance. So this is going to give me approval to move forward for him to contract, work out the contract with Bank of America for the final documents. Then those final documents are going to come back to us with a recommendation from him and also then go to the Board of Finance.
All right, I'll make a motion to proceed moving forward with Bank of America.
Second half. Any further discussion?
Too late to be true.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Okay. Old business. New business? Talk about- Yeah, we can bring that up under old business. Can you give us an update on the utility project? For the members of the audience?
Yeah, I don't know where to start. Yeah. What we're trying to do right now is pin down, you know, the last of the, the last anchor, anchor tenants, anchor, uh, logs. We've got, uh, we've got support from DECD or, you know, DEP and help, you know, corral the hospital. They got, they were published today on what their, what their criteria are to keep them out of trouble with the environmental department. So that should, that should play out pretty easily. We've got negotiations are going on with 3M and American Woolen. We've been, once we, you know, reach an accommodation with those, those two firms and, you know, we're prepared to bring you a package and, you know, lay out the, lay out what we, what we think we can achieve and then you get to make a decision.
Yeah, for those of you that don't know, the hospital has been under order from DEP to hook to the Water Pollution Control Authority and-
For five years.
Yeah, and their decree expired December thirty-first and they had to ask for an extension based on their involvement in our utility expansion project.
They asked for a two-year extension.
They had asked for a two-year extension, but DEP was, I think, a little hesitant, you know, given, you know, past history and, you know, water under the bridge and they wanted to, we ended up having to get involved to kind of move DEP to say, yes, this is a legitimate project. You know, we've had, we've been in the meetings with the Lieutenant Governor, we've had all the players in the, in the room and it's not a project that we're, you know, making up. So DEP, you know, took the project seriously in that respect. When we had DEP energy in one room and DEP environmentalist isn't there, the two sides weren't communicating. So they came on board and they said, okay, we found out, you know, the details of the project. So they tied the hospital's approval to the participation in the project. Something like that.
But they, they only gave an extension for until July thirty-first.
Of this year.
Of this year.
When they have to get, July thirty-first of this year, then they have to give update, updated reports.
Yeah.
I don't think there's anybody at DEP that wants to come down and give advice to the hospital or crack down on them. They just want to make sure they-
For close them.
For close them, exactly.
So there's not a deadline for the hospital to be hooked up by the DEP just yet?
No, what they're willing to do is work with us for, on a, on a very short chain so that, you know, there is steady progress toward the goal and that they ensure continued participation on a regular basis. So we don't miss the Dennis apartment.
So the project's pretty well on its way, you believe?
I do, but I always have.
Yeah. What's good, positive, I like positive.
We're still, we're still finishing up agreements with the anchors. And then our next step is we need to complete some engineering. We need to have some, some public outreach and some public hearings and then have a referendum. You know, once we get the agreements with the anchors, it's very difficult for me to go to the public and say, we want to spend this much money and not have a plan on how to pay for it. So we have to have some agreements in place with these anchors so that I can tell the public, this is how much we're spending, this is how much is being reimbursed from the anchors. So this portion's left of our burden from the town. And that's been kind of what's slowing it down is finalizing these agreements with the anchors and the final numbers that they're going to be contributing back in.
Yeah, but plus, you know, American Woolen's board only needs once a month, or once, here's a quarter and, you know, they didn't, we didn't make the last quarter, so we've got a party in April to get something, you know, that their staff can support and get it in front of their board so that they can, they can vote on it. I don't get the same problem with 3M only on a much larger scale. We're dealing with Minnesota.
All righty.
Thank you.
You're welcome. No longer old business? This is new business. Well, it could be, it could be.
We've discussed it before.
Be borrowed or blue?
I have a letter that the Economic Development Commission wishes to come before the board and discuss sixty-four Main Street.
I'll make a wish to add.
Second half. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Who's speaking for the Economic Development Commission?
Bill O'War.
We were, we had an economic development meeting on Tuesday evening and we had quite a few of the people, business owners from Main Street down. And the property owner of sixty-four Main Street spoke to us with regards to the difficulty that he was having at leasing or renting the property to the gentleman, Chris Joseph, who would like to put in a farmer's market kind of thing. And he just felt he was frustrated with working with the politics of Stafford and what was going on and came to us and was reaching out for some help. And so we were looking for, we heard one side of the equation and now we want to hear the other side of the equation. We were told he bought the property for twenty-five hundred dollars. That's-
Twenty-four, twenty-five hundred.
Yeah, and that he put two hundred, two hundred thousand dollars worth of work into the property and, you know, and, you know, he was behind on his taxes, he understood that- He understood that there, you know, that was an issue. He said he paid the water pollution control facilities, um, lien off that he had on it in an effort to get a building permit to establish this business in there, but, um, is being denied a building permit. So that was his side of the equation, and, um, and as an economic development, we would like to see businesses coming into Stafford. So we'd like a more detailed explanation as to what the problem is and what's happening for the local block.
I think there's a, there's a, there's a, there's a couple of, couple of issues that are running parallel and, and kind of redundant or conflicting against each other even, but...
Oh, call on me.
Huh?
Call on me.
Call on us. Okay, I'll have, yes.
Mr. Joseph, is that his name?
Chris Joseph is the one that is, he's the gentleman who's looking to rent.
I'm very rhythm, I'm just clarifying his name. Mr. Joseph had several conversations with, you know, my office and, and, you know, others in my, the zoning, zoning people at Health Department, myself. I talked to him several times about the necessity for, you know, outlining what it was he planned to do, how he planned to do it, uh, what changes were being made. As, as far back as December of last year, uh, when we, we observed that there was, uh, brown paper, paper over the windows, with a sign saying, you know, coming soon. I stuck a business card in the door because I could never find anybody there during, during working hours. He eventually called me at home over, over a weekend, and I expressed to him, you know, our ability to help him solve his, his problem and, and work his way through the system, because that's what we did. To, to his chagrin, that his, his landlord, um, has primarily failed to pay, you know, the taxes due on the property. By statute, we can't issue a building permit, no matter what it is, without, without the taxes being paid. That's, that's a fiscal reality that I think has merit, because without that, there's no other leverage, you know, to, to, to retrieve what is owed to the town. And it's unfair for some people to get treated differently than others. Our efforts to computerize the permitting process and solidify, um, the approval of, of permits, which includes WPCA and, and the Tax Department, has actually increased our revenue stream. All right, and, 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 you know, given us an ability to get our hand, get a handle around some of the, uh, the people that have been delinquent over time. We advised Mr. Christopher that, um, the Tax Department was, was, was in the process of putting the, the building up for, for tax auction, because they had been delinquent for so long. And, uh, he was putting a business in, in a spot that was dangerous for him to be able to continue for twelve months. That said, you know, he never came to, never came back to the office, uh, to, to fill out a, a single permit. He was advised that because of what he intended to do, he was required to have, at, at the very least, a zoning permit for change of use because of the difference, because he's gonna bring food products in where he didn't have food products before in a retail space. So it was a change of use permit. He intended to do some electrical work, but, you know, never really specified what. He intended to do some plumbing, never specified what. Never wrote down a list of, of, of potential renovations that we asked him for. We went up there on a second occasion, at least two occasions, and walked his face with him, you know, pointing out, you know, random, random items that, you know, came to mind over, that, you know, needed some attention of some kind. Again, never filled out a permit. We went back a third time. He asked me to come up the third time, and at this point, it was, it was down to me, because the zoning officer wasn't there yet. Never filled out any paperwork, but never a request for anything. So there was no way for us to track it. We went back up there a third time. He had, he had obviously done some of the work. He had a, a, an exit light over a, over an exit, over a, a pathway out that was powered by an extension cord. He had rigged some hose, some water hoses to act as temporary water lines connected to some freezer element that was actually going to chill water using domestic water and throwing it away. At which point, you know, we just, you know, ran out of patience. You can, you can lead a horse to water, I can't make him drink it. So, that was our experience with Mr. Christopher. We tried on three or four occasions each to facilitate him to, you know, get to where he needed to be, and he was, um, reluctant and intransigent to take or implement any of our suggestions.
And I do understand the property is up for a tax auction.
Yeah. Yeah, which means anything he, anything, he, any money that he expended in that space is, is potentially gone. You know, he was, he expressed to us a belief that, uh, his agreement with the landlord would survive a sale. We tried very hard to explain to him that that didn't make legal, that didn't satisfy legal precedent. You know, someone buys the place, they don't have to buy your, you know, buy your tenant. So, our opinion is Mr. Christopher created his own problem. And we were doing our job to enforce the rules and try and help him navigate them.
I agree with you, but we were here on one side of the equation, and that's why he felt it was best, and, um, from what I understand, it's going to a tax auction as of Monday, Thursday, isn't it, or Tuesday?
Yeah, and all of his effort in that space is wasted.
And I believe part of the complaint to you was that I don't return his phone calls, Ron.
Correct.
You stopped returning the phone calls because he's not listening to what we're telling him. I don't have, have the ability to just wave town ordinances and wave building code. I, I can't do it. So when he's not listening to the building official, I can't override the building official. He's the one with the license, um, and he's the one who knows the code. So, I hope that, that...
Yes, it's nice to hear the other side of the story for them.
Thank you.
Yep. I almost wish he was here, though, again.
Correct.
And I don't, in other words, I don't believe if we look in files, there's two hundred thousand dollars with a building permits on there. Reconstruction of the house.
Were there permits taken out for that part of it?
I haven't looked at probably, I should.
Probably have.
Okay, so did that grant the...
It's your, I answered it back. What is, what's owed on it?
Tons of money.
Twenty-one thousand.
Seventy to eighty thousand.
How much?
I think seventy or eighty thousand.
I, I think between the two properties that the, the owner has up, coming up for sale, I believe it's fifty-one thousand.
Fifty-one, that's about twenty-one more.
No, I think it's fifty, I think it's fifty-one. I'd have to check with Stephanie. Uh, we've had a tax cycle come around too, so...
Right.
Yeah, it's a number she's got right over there.
Okay, thank you very much.
Unfortunately, it's not fair to the rest of the taxpayers. There's roughly a mil in the tax rate to, to pay for the lingering taxes.
Yeah, that we pay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Records a Saturday and a Sunday.
Okay, so we want to put this on the agenda?
I'll make a motion to add this to the agenda.
We've got a big sale for...
We've got a plant flower sale for...
Flower sale. Big sale, big sale. Reserve the town hall parking lot for a flower sale.
And who is sponsoring it then? And it says, thanks Nancy, but isn't the, right? You would think that would be on there too, don't you think?
Can you be Black Cloud Southern Cox Town, yeah? I don't know, because there's not a name on it.
That's Nancy Ravetta.
Oh.
But this is the Democratic Town Committee who's asking for this? I believe so. I believe so. I mean, it's fun, it's...
Is, is, is it available those days?
It's a Saturday, it's right.
I don't have it.
Do I need a motion, or it's just fine? I'll make a motion to grant them the dates that they're asking for to use the town hall park. It's a Saturday and a Sunday, April twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth.
Second half. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anything else?
I don't want you to show them, anything else?
Would it hurt your feelings if I make a motion to adjourn?
Not at all.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hi, Dave. Oh. I tried to submit a two-week job, pardon me. Yeah, because they asked me to... They wanted to, wanted to keep it basement. Was it, yeah, they said the back box, no, it's a relax, because they're all, they're all set.